Good evening. It's six o'clock and it is July 26th. I'm going to call the city council meeting to order. Will you please stand with me to say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will do roll. Councilman Owen.
President.
Councilman McGoffin.
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilwoman Burns.
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilman Allen.
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca.
Present.
Thank you everybody for being here. Next item on the agenda, item D, the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So we had a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman McGoffin. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On to item E, consent agenda, items one through four. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman McGoffin. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, thank you. Moving on to item F, introduction of special guests. Tonight, we do have a special guest. We have Jeanne Williams who is here from the library and she's going to give us an update. Welcome, Jeanne.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having me tonight. I thought it would be a good idea to give you a mid-year update and just let you know the activities going on in the library. I did bring hard copies in case it's easier to pull through and plus you would have my contact information and it'd be easier. And also if you want to refer to this, if you want to talk about how busy we are in the community. So I really appreciate your time tonight and I'm very happy to be here. One of the things I've been thinking about when coming before you is to, as a city council, you may be interested in how the library is structured as far as our board of trustees, but also the library cardholders who are city residents. So we actually did a study to break that out for you tonight. So when you look at our board of trustees page, I'm used to being the one doing (laugh). So if you look at our board makeup, we actually have three city residents that sit on our board and two district residents. There is no bylaw stating that there has to be a certain number. This just happens to be how it has turned out. When we do recruitment for trustees, we get varying degrees of interest. So you know, if someone's interested and they want to dedicate their time, it's really, it doesn't matter if they're a district or a city resident. They want to put their time in and we value that. On the next page, I just have a list of our staff. I have a really wonderful, dedicated staff and they really set the tone for our library being welcoming, informative, and helpful. I could not do any of this without all of them. And as you see at the bottom, we are about to bring on a marketing specialist to help us with getting the word out about what we do. And part of that will be, the next time I come before you, the presentation will be much better than what I can produce. I don't feel that I'm as creative as a marketing specialist could be. Next slide. So these stats are from as of June 30th this year. And you can see that we're quite busy. We've had over 700 uses of our meeting rooms since January. We've had over 75,000 items check out. That's books, DVDs, magazines, audiobooks. We've had over 41,000 people walk through our doors. We've had over 3,000 children attend our literacy programs. We've had over 7,500 computer uses. And that's the public stations that we provide. We provide 12 public stations to the, to the public. We also have 16 laptops that we check out. These computers are always busy. We also, in the digital realm, our ebooks and our digital audiobooks, as well as digital movies, we've had over 20,000 items check out in the first half of the year. So we've, we've been quite busy and our visibility in the community, because of where we're located now, has just really increased the, the traffic into our library. One of the things that is really hard to capture here because of the way that Wi-Fi routers work, we offer free Wi-Fi, 1 gigabit speed, to patrons inside and within our parking lot areas. So 24 hours a day, students, we have college students that come in late after work and use our internet at night. We have business people who are traveling who use our internet. So our Wi-Fi is constantly in use and it's always, always available. Next slide. So, one of the things I wanted to share with the city in how our, our patrons are dispersed across the landscape, as you can see, the vast majority of our patrons are city residents. They live within the city, the city limits of Cedar Woolley. As expected, very close in number is the number of district residents who live in the rural areas around Cedar Woolley. We also have some reciprocal cards with our neighboring libraries, but not as many as you would think. And then we also provide student cards to all of the library, all of the students in the Cedar Woolley School District. And this came about in late 2021. We worked with the school district to create a memorandum of understanding so that students would have access, no matter where they live in the district, because some of you may know Lyman and Hamilton are not part of our district. So we wanted a way to provide those students library services and still stay within the legal boundaries of gifting of public funds. And this was one way we could do it. What we do about every six weeks, the school district provides me with files and we batch upload new students and we pull out students who have left the district. So that's working really well. The reason I separated them out in this particular slide is because this, I felt the student ratio would skew the actual numbers of our city and our district residents because the students are a, a very large chunk of our database is our, our school students. So we have over 5,000 students in our database, but we do keep that updated at least every six weeks. Next slide. And here I thought it was interesting to show you our patron distribution across the landscape. As, as expected for me, our patrons are centered very close either in Cedar Woolley or right around Cedar Woolley. And then north and south on Highway nine and then upriver on both South Skagit Highway and Highway 20. We do have small pockets of patrons. We have some patrons in Lake Cavanaugh and we have our reciprocal borrowers that are in the Mount Vernon and the Burlington area. The little heat map spot that you see under Sudden Valley, those patrons are in Watcomb County, but we do have reciprocal borrowing with Watcomb County. So we're able to help those patrons as well because most of them travel through Cedar Woolley. They don't go to Bellingham or the Watcomb County libraries. Next slide. Wanted to share with you some of the activities that we have going on. One thing, and I mentioned this last time I was here, we are in the middle of a community needs assessment. We're working with a consultant company, Colab Capacity. We've done the, the groundwork for the needs assessment and starting in late August, we will be conducting interviews, focus groups, and putting out a survey. And I hope some of you or all of you will agree through those surveys to get follow-up phone calls, if not, be part of our focus groups. The, the survey does contain questions about library services, but the bulk of the survey is about how people feel about the community, where they want to see the community go. And we want to align our services and our strategies to what our community wants. So we're excited about that. Another thing that we've increased this summer and will continue to increase is the outreach that we do to our local community agencies. We go and we meet people where they are. And I'm going to hand you some of our flyers for those so that you're aware. This is our, just a representative sample of our summer reading program. So these are activities that we put on for adults and children. We have, coming up in months, we have a concert we'll be doing at Riverfront Park. It's a family-friendly children's concert. And then we have that in books, English and Spanish. So some of the community outreach that we do, we have been providing large rotating collections where we gather up hundreds of books and we take them to the Boys and Girls Club. And then the Boys and Girls Club uses those within their own programs. And then once they've finished one theme, we pick those up, we bring them new books. And so that's been really successful. And Boys and Girls Club have been very happy to have that, that resource. We also provide programs and activity kits at the Cedar Woolley Rec. Center in our old location at Ball Street. We also provide activity kits at the Cedar Woolley Farmers Market once a month. We also take activity kits and we do programs and storytimes at our local child development centers, including Good Beginnings, North Cascade Child Development Center, Mountain View, and Children of the Valley. Some of the activity kits I thought I would bring, just to let you see what we mean by activity kits, these are mostly science, technology, engineering-related. These are extremely popular. These activity kits, we really started doing them during COVID because we couldn't have people in the building. And we found that they were so popular, we had to keep providing them. So they're often either art or science, technology, engineering-related. I was going to say, hey, share them. We also deliver these kits to the food programs at Cedar Woolley School District. So we get those out at those programs as well. Some of the other things we do in the library, we do provide craft activities for adults and teens. And we do that to build community and to build skills, social skills, as well as, some of those activities also involve strategy such as our Dungeons and Dragons groups that Ms. Kestie had mentioned before. But, you know, building community is important too with literacy. We also have adult interest programs. Tonight, we have a decluttering and organization program going on. We've done Medicare programs. We'll be doing, we'll be working with Lega Women Voters to encourage voter signup in September. And then we, we have other crafting programs as well. We had a very popular club based around the Hunt a Killer series. I don't know if you've seen those. We had Mid-Month Murder Club that was very popular and we'll, we'll resume that in the fall. We have the, as I mentioned, the Children's Concert at Riverfront Park. That's August 8th at 6:00 PM. And our summer reading program this year, we have 550 children and teens participating and 143 adults. And what we do, the summer reading program is a, really important for libraries to provide so that children don't lose their reading skills over the summer. So we, we provide incentive prizes. We give them activities to do. This year, we did it in bingo card style so children could mark off the bingo and get a prize for their, their reading activities. So that's one of our biggest programs we do for the year because it lasts all summer. Next slide. So we have some new services that we're going to be starting. This one I'm really excited about. So this is a career diploma high school. It's an accredited program where adults can get their high school diploma. It's not a GED. It's a high school diploma. Our neighbors of River, Upper Skagit Library District, how to do the program and I were coming on board with it as well. This, this does come at cost. We, let me get back to this. We, the, to, to put a student through this program costs around $2,000 per student. The board will be committing some operating funds to, to put students through it, but it's also an opportunity for local civic organizations to sponsor someone. Local industries and business could put one of their employees through this program if they want them to get their, their high school diploma. Our friends of the library will be helping to fundraise for this. We have total control. We screen the students. We, we make sure that the investment we're making is, is with someone who is committed to getting the work done. And we'll have complete control over that, that program. So we've had quite a few questions about it because people here heard about Upper Skagit doing it. So we're, we're going to implement it. It should go live starting next week sometime. So more to come on that. We'll also be implementing over the next month or so, an app, an application for your phone to bring all of our services into one app for patrons. So be one stop shop for all your, your library services, including most of our digital services. We've added Gale Business Plan Builder and Entrepreneurship. This, this is a, a service where people who are interested in starting a business can learn how to build their business plan and how to get financing and all those things that go along with being a small business owner. We are going to be participating in the Cedar Woolley School District's Reading and Resources on the field. Last year, it was under the lights and we were part of that as well. We are also having to add more story hours for children because the groups are getting so large, it's become unmanageable. So we're creating more, more story time options for our, our families. Some of our future plans, or at least my big ideas, we, some of you may know that we have our bookmobile up on public surplus. That bookmobile was transferred to us through intergovernmental transfer from another library district that used it for about 18 years. It's a 20-year-old bus. It served its purpose and we're really happy to have it, but it is not ADA accessible. It is extremely hard to get in and out of. It's very hard to load with heavy books. So we've got it up for public surplus. And my hope is that in the future, we could get a more manageable sized van that's more efficient, that has a lift, that would allow us to load whole carts of books so that if we do take a large collection to Boys and Girls Club, we're not just loading tubs into the back of an employee's car. It would give us many more options to serve our local youth centers, assisted living centers. We'd be able to take, take items into the living centers and check them out right there on site. So that's one of my dreams. We're also looking at offering, I'm trying to get funding through the state library to offer Brainfuse, which is an online or a telephonic tutoring program free to our students who need it. And I'm also looking, we're working on it right now, the expansion of resource sharing among all of our Skagit libraries. So right now, we have Cedar Woolley Library, Burlington Public Library, Upper Skagit Library, and La Conner Library. We're all sharing a catalog. Just this week, we have been able to get all of the settings right so that staff can place holds for patrons on items that belong to other libraries. And we will courier those items so that patrons don't have to drive to La Conner to get a book. So far, it's working pretty well. And it's really exciting because it, it allows us to save money and not duplicate so much of our effort. In the future, we're, there are plans for Mount Vernon to join our consortium and we hope later on after that, Anacortes will join. So it'll allow us to remain independent libraries, but share resources in a way that we save money and we're not just duplicating effort over and over and over again. It'll allow us, it'll allow us some specialization in our book collections as well. So those are the things we're working on. And I, if you have any questions, please let me know. And thank you again for your time. I want everyone to, to know that we're, we're serving the community and we, we really enjoy doing it.
I do know you quite involved with all the different agencies and so the YMCA and the Boys and the Girls Club, Cedar Woolley School District. You really have done a great job of doing outreach and bringing everybody under that umbrella of the library. You do a beautiful job, Jeanne. And I'm looking at all these programs and I went back and I looked to see how many employees you actually have to. You do a lot with a very small staff.
So. They're, they're so amazing.
Yeah. So how do you do that though? I mean, that's.
We, we all pitch in and we all help each other. We're all trained so that we can all do the same jobs. So no matter how, you know, this week, we have two people out on vacation and, you know, we just, we do what we have to do. But it's a testament to what wonderful employees I do have at the library.
That's wonderful. And training, great training, obviously. So are there, are there questions for Jeanne? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for, for coming tonight and giving us the presentation. My daughter really loves going to the storytime. I did have just one question, just mostly out of curiosity. What's your guys' policy and stance with like, if the school district bans a book, what do you guys follow with?
We, if, if a patron comes to our library to ban a book, because we're separate entities, so it, it, we would not necessarily follow the same line. It would be, we would handle it independently.
You guys get a lot of requests for that or is it pretty rare?
It's pretty rare. Usually people maybe just ask us to, to put something where it's not as visible. Some of our manga and, if you're familiar with manga and graphic novels, sometimes the superheroes, the, you know, the form-fitting superhero, you know, outfits. Some people might not want those facing where kids can see them. So we do our best to, to provide the material without causing too much upset.
Are there any other questions? Yes, Ms. Lavaca?
Yeah, thank you for the library. It's, it's such a wonderful spot right downtown. It looks beautiful and it really shines, right? I was wondering with the high school program, have you had very many applicants so far or are you getting ready to roll out the program?
We're still in the process of rolling it out, but interestingly, we had someone from, I think it was Puyallup, who was searching through an online high school through ChatGPT and somehow it connected them to us. And we haven't even rolled it out yet. So unfortunately, we're, we can't offer it outside of our district, but it made me hopeful that people will find us. People in our community will find us and know that it's available. But I'm, I'm going to get the website set up tomorrow and I'm hoping by early next week, it'll be live.
And then do you have the career pass right here as well? Do you guys ever do like job fair, career fairs with the, the community or unemployment to help with that as well? Or is that something you've considered partnering with them once a year, twice a year with?
One of the things we would like to do is become a work source site. We do also participate in some of the job fairs at Skagit Valley College. We also work directly one-on-one with patrons who are trying to use those business resources that we have. So we, we, we do it in, in very different ways. But I would like to expand it and to become a, an actual work source location.
And last question. There's been some ideas about possibly getting the pamphlet that we have, which could be very extensive, 900 pages sometimes, 500 pages, 100 pages, available at the library for people who may not have computer access. Is there a possibility if they had the request that, and I don't know if this is something maybe for the council to approve, but to be billed for if we do a printout for that individual or individuals if there's a request or have access for that online? I'm sure there's access online, but if there was a, a printout requested or something.
In, in situations like that, if, if we're providing what we would call a reference, if someone's looking for information that we provide, we would print that out for them, especially in other public agencies' information. We're also a repository for those studies that have to go through like a 30-day public comment. So we, we make those available. But we, we never charge patrons if we're offering them a resource that's only available online. The only time patrons have to pay for prints is if they're printing off their own materials.
Oh, you're amazing. Thank you very much again. You guys do an awesome service to our community. Appreciate it.
Okay, anyone else? I know I already mentioned this to you, but the assessment that you're going to be doing, the needs assessment, is that something that you'll be sharing with some of the other entities, agencies, when you've completed that?
So one of the reasons we chose the consultant that we did is because in the end, we will have an actual portal that hosts all of that data for any agency to access and pull down and, 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 you know, use however, you know, best suits them. So it'll be widely available.
That's excellent. Thank you so much. And I know you said you're looking for individuals to participate or do keep us in mind and send us an email.
You're, you're all on the list.
We look forward to it. Thank you so much, Jeanne. Appreciate it. Appreciate the work you and your team are doing. Okay, moving on to report, city administrator report.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Council, no report this evening.
All right, moving on to Councilman Owen.
I don't really have much to say, but I went to the little Riverfront Park Sunday night and enjoyed it. There was a nice crowd there. So anybody here that hasn't been down there, it's really worthwhile. So it's kind of laid back and you can take your dog or somebody else's old lady or whatever. This, you'll be, you'll be okay. That's all I have.
All right, Councilman McGoffin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to report on the Public Works Committee meeting that we had before this one. Mark gave a really good overview of all the projects that we're working on as well as the different divisions. There was one thing I wanted to bring up. There were no votes or suggestions to bring to council for this one, but we did talk about the fleet mechanic. We did lose our part-time mechanic in December and we're currently looking at filling this full-time mechanic position sometime in the future. So that's coming. Just wanted to let you guys know.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Diamond.
Nothing tonight. I sat in on that meeting as well. It was a great meeting. Thank you, Mark, for putting all of that detailed information together. And that's all. All right, thank you. Councilman Burns.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Kestie.
I guess I have two things. If you do want to come to the Summer Concert Series, it's Sunday at six to eight. And then the second thing is, on Saturday, it's Remembering Northern State, and there will be a huge program up there from ten AM to four PM.
All right, thank you. Councilman Allen.
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lavaca?
Yes, thank you very much. Thanks for excusing me last week, guys, or last meeting, I appreciate that. So it's come up with the, the, I've been spending a little bit of time at the Veterans Park and enjoying that, and it just reminds me how much our community has to offer, and I know that's a county park, but it's still considered Cedar Woolley, and it definitely draws in a lot of people, and it's really nice to have that there. I've gone over their, their master vision plan, and just looking at it, it's similar to the parks and ideas we have around here, and it just allows a lot of hope for our community on, on, as far as parks and rec circuit goes, about how much opportunity that we have in the works that's happening. And when you start to compile all those conception drawings together, it's like, it's, it's gonna be a really, really, really fun place to be. So excited to see that.
All right, thank you. And I see we have Kevin Loy on here. He sits on the Skagit County Mount Vernon Parks, and I think that they have been very instrumental in completing the Veterans Park and some of the activities that are going on there. Welcome, Mr. Loy. I have a couple of things tonight. First off, PUD has been, has sent out an invitation to invite city councils to attend one of their two tours. They have one from one to three on Thursday, August tenth, and one from nine-thirty to eleven-thirty on Thursday, August seventeenth, and they would like people to RSVP by the thirty-first of this month. Judy Reservoir is really a fascinating facility in that it services eighty-five thousand people in our county, which is absolutely amazing, and the tour, of course, will be part of Gilligan Creek Intake, which is forty percent of our water supply, Judy Reservoir, which is one point five billion gallons of water storage, and then the water treatment plant itself. So I hope you'll have a chance to take advantage of that. If you've never done that before, it's well worth the tour. The second thing, and I sent this one out, is an invitation to the Skagit Food Distribution Center here in Cedar Woolley on August fourteenth from four-thirty to six, and they will be taking a look at the emergency food system here in Skagit County, and it's a great chance to see that facility and how they actually operate. They do a tremendous amount of work and distribute a lot of food to different agencies, food banks around the county here. And the last thing, and Ms. Kestie's already mentioned it, is the Remembering Northern State, and they do have different, from ten AM all the way up to four PM, they are going to be having speakers, and one of them at three-thirty is the gal from the Seattle Times who did the documentary that's kind of circulating on the internet, and maybe you received it into your email. So it'd be fascinating to hear her talk. And that's, oh, and congratulations, Sarah, to your children's team. It sounds like they did really well. Yeah.
Yes, so we actually, we have a Cedar Woolley Little League team that went to state, and they took sixth, surprisingly enough to everybody in the entire state tournament, that our little town beat teams coming out of Seattle and, and other areas with huge pools to grab from. So congratulations to these twelve little girls that played with all the heart in the world, so. They represented Cedar Woolley with a lot of class and a lot of grit.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, then, moving on to public comment, I'll open the floor up for public comment at six-thirty-three. I ask that you keep it to three minutes. Please give your name and address if you come to present. So would anybody like to come forward? I'll first offer it to those here in the room, and then I'll go online. Okay, nobody here in the room. How about online? Just turn your mic off. All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment, and we will move on to unfinished business. So the first thing that we have on the docket for unfinished is the Community Development Grant Program, Resolution one-one-one-seven-two-three. Mr. Bush.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. So the Community Development Grant Program was discussed on June twenty-first by the Planning and Business Development Committee. The meeting minutes from that particular meeting are in your packet tonight as well. There are a couple of documents that came on Monday, so they relate materials to the packet due to the fact that I was on vacation and I needed to give the committee long enough to review the materials that were revised at the June twenty-first meeting. So that's why you got it a little bit late, but we wanted to spend some night, some time tonight talking with you about it, and the last time we talked about this at the full council was May, the May Work Session. The council went through a series of, of motions and votes on a variety of things. We rebuilt the program to, to match what the council desired at that time, and then the committee has taken it a little bit further. One of the things that was up in the air that night was whether or not improvements could be internally facing. There was a split vote on that, and so the committee, in this particular recommendation to you, has recommended that they only be externally facing. So no internal improvements, no non-visible-to-the-public improvements. And the other big change that you'll see is community voting provision. So this is a new element where the committee desired to have the community actually weigh in on these projects and provide the council an advisory vote, some information. So that would include the Chamber of Commerce, who has agreed to be a polling site, possibly the city, and some other locations where people would literally be able to go and have a physical vote that then would come to council for you to review as a part of your decision-making process. So that's what's there. There are two documents, they should be familiar documents to you because you've seen them before, they're just revised. We spared you having to look at the track changes version of this continued from the prior meetings because it was getting very messy. So we created a clean version with just some basic things highlighted, and one of the basic things highlighted is that question, and this was at the committee's request, of internal versus external improvements. The, the committee wanted to highlight that to make sure that was really clear, that that was something they changed, but something they wanted to continue to talk about. And another highlight related to that was a little bit further down, related to online commerce as an example project that was brought up by, by a council member during the prior conversation, and when we were thinking about things that weren't publicly facing, that's the kind of project that, that could get funded, but that's marked off right now and highlighted as well. So the, the first document is just the scope of work for the program, and then the second document is the draft application for the program, and again, highlighted things related to non-public-facing improvements. So for tonight, I want to turn it over to the committee members who were part of this meeting to see if I missed anything that you want to emphasize, but otherwise, we're looking for the council to provide some direction on this. We've had this in front of you several times. So, you know, it's been the committee. I'd recommend at this point, we keep the council if at all possible. That's ultimately up to the council, but it'd be good to, to scope this in whatever way might be needed at this point, and to decide if we want to move forward or not.
Councilman Burns.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So all committee members were present for the meeting where we discussed this. We went through everything at length, just to make sure that we covered all of our bases. Considering the change, or the lack of change, I guess, as far as exterior versus interior, we determined that for it to be overall as useful as possible for development of tax dollars coming into the city, having those changes being external on a building was the most bang for the buck, so to speak. That was a unanimous vote for the committee. We also decided that because we were doing external facing, that it just didn't make sense for us to include the online activities, plus the, the difficulty in wading through all the rules that might have to be added just to accommodate that one line seemed like a bit much for us, so I think we all agreed that that was a, a good choice to make as well. Otherwise, we were in agreeance on the rest of this text. As you can see, there weren't many changes. The only thing that we, we really debated at length was how we would do an advisory vote for the public, just giving them an opportunity to weigh in, try to be fair about it, where we have as much transparency as possible with why the city is considering doing things with the public's funds, and let them have some input. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything from Councilman Lavaca or Councilman McGoffin regarding this? You were both there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So one of the big things was to put this in front of the public as much as we possibly could. So having it at the chamber and, and having the, the director of the library here, maybe possibly utilizing the libraries, the two spots would be a tremendous blessing. Then they can see a one-page scene of what the idea is, what the concept is, and then they would be able to put in their vote whether it's something they would go for and, and have come before the council or not. So that seemed like a very viable solution to a lot of the decision-making on, on the types of projects. The projects would be in line with the municipal code, so it would really kind of streamline, if we're redoing a mural, it's going to be within the same theme that the code already states needs to be done. So that's a benefit for us. We don't really have to worry about vetting too much if we lean into the municipal code for the Central Business District or, or other business district, so. It seemed like a pretty viable solution to, to me, and I think that the meeting was pretty productive, so it was a good chance to bring it back to the council.
All right, thank you. Anything from you? Councilman McGoffin?
I just wanted to add that there was a lot of discussion on if, like, the council would still have the final say, and so I wanted to make sure that was clear to everyone that the advisory vote from the public would be input to us, but we could ultimately have a yea or nay on the application. And it's also, I'm not sure if it was touched on before, but it's just businesses and nonprofits, there's no individuals. So that, I know that was a concern with some council members, so I want to make sure that was clear, that it's just those two that are eligible now.
Okay, thank you. So any discussion or questions or concerns? Hearing none, does the council want to move forward with this?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, I'm looking at this, and I would, like, so clarity on the actual, the funds are to be processed through Business Economic Development Committee. Is that correct?
No, not at this point. So the council at the meeting in May was very clear that the council wanted to make the final decisions on, on whether or not projects get funded, so each project would come to the council for a final decision, not go through the.
So this is no longer Business Economic Development?
It, it's not within the committee. The council would be wearing essentially the hat of thinking about this grant program from an economic development perspective, the whole council.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to go back to my initial train of thought in the beginning of all of it, is that, you know, the return on investment and how it's going to increase tax revenue for the businesses ultimately, and then back into the city, because that's what, you know, we want to do, right? So I'm just, I'm just trying to wrap my head around how some of this stuff is going to be, how the return on investment is calculated. I don't know if that's been a part of your discussion at all.
It, it's difficult to quantify that, for sure. So if, let's say, there's a hundred and forty thousand, and I think it's five to ten thousand, so let's go of ten thousand, fourteen grants, fourteen buildings down in the Central Business District make visible improvements. We don't know what kind of effect that will have on the, the, ultimately, what I'm looking at is the residents having a better enjoyable time and wanting to spend more time in town, but also with visitors as well, tourism and whatnot. But if you're in an area that's, that's visibly cleaner and, and better-looking, you feel better. So those kind of improvements would have people want to stay. As far as how that equates to tax increase, as far as dollars spent for value added, I don't know that we would necessarily see that same amount besides just the feel of, of having a more beautiful city. But like Charlie said, it would go from business committee over to council, so it's something that went through the committee, and then it would be passed the council, the council, and then foretake it from, from that point forward, and would no longer be a business committee, although it would be the purpose, like you're saying, the strategic business. How is it going to improve business in town?
Right. I guess I'm just looking, because some of these things, to me, look like public works projects, sidewalks, lighting, trees and landscape, like, you know, some of that sorts of stuff, and so I'm, I was just wondering what lines we were crossing or blurring is in regards to, you know, committees and, and how that funding and stuff was being handled and developed, and, and what then unintended consequences could come out of it in the sense of, you know, we provide grant money to, for, trees are listed here. Well, I know that there's certain restrictions on certain trees, but there are also trees that were planted a hundred years ago in our city that now we're bringing up sidewalks that now become an issue, right? So then who becomes responsible for that? The city provided grant money to go to that, but that went to a business that went ahead and did that, and, you know, fifty years later, somebody then becomes responsible for the roots that are now pushing up the sidewalk that, you know, somebody tripped on. You know, is that the business? Does that come back to the ci, you know, it's, I'm just trying to think through the process of all of this stuff and the unintended consequences of, of what some of these projects could lead to.
And to go back to Brendan, Councilman Brendan's point, he was really adamant that it would come back to the council regardless of the public vote. So the public might be really excited about trees, like you're saying. Let's do the whole street in maples, this will be awesome, but then the council might have, like, you bring a sensible point of view that says, well, what about fifty years from now? How is this going to affect us? And so ultimately, the seven council members would make a vote and, and say, okay, well, how is this going to work out? And then no or yes. And so ultimately, that, that discussion would come back to the council, and we would probably vote for, I mean, with that kind of logic, no. I don't know with the rest of the council, but with that logic, I would vote no for something like that. Who knows?
A couple other pieces of this, we, we would be talking with Public Works internally. If we have something that's Public Works-related, we're definitely talking with them, we're looking at the existing city standards, we're making sure that we're not setting ourselves up for future failure.
Right.
And our contract language, I'm sure Nikki will be helping us as we get that together for the actual grant that we provide, I'm sure can help insulate us against some future liability. We also added to the application a, just one question around impact, so we're asking the applicants to discuss how their project will directly or indirectly increase tax revenues in Cedar Woolley. And as Councilmember Lavaca said, that can definitely be a, a hard thing to prove, but we want people to intentionally think about it before they submit their application, because that is really the thrust of what we're trying to do here.
Right. And then I do have a comment on the historical markers signifying events and people that are more than fifty years old. I really think that that would be something that wouldn't necessarily be reviewed by council, but it should be reviewed by somebody in, with historic archive, and probably through more like museum historic archives or something of that sort. Fifty years really isn't that old necessarily, but when you go in and look at historical markers and stuff through town, making sure that the research is properly done and that that's, you know, clearly noted, I just would be very careful about that. Advertising for city tourism, are you, can somebody explain that one to me? Because that, that, to me, is something that, I know the city does, but the chamber should also be doing quite a bit of that. And so, and then no more than twice a year, but this is a one-time grant. How was that? What was the discussion around that?
Twice a year was actually a reference to no more than two grants for that purpose in a year. That was the original purpose of that, and if I remember correctly, was that section from you, Councilman Lavaca? Okay. That probably was more geared towards organizations, but it would be possible for businesses to do that. I would not be completely opposed to striking that line, since you're right, that that is something that more commonly would be done as a broader umbrella than a single business, but I have seen businesses organize with each other to do things like that, to help advertise if they feel like they're not being represented well enough by organizations in the area that normally do it.
Is there anything else? Councilwoman Diamond?
We've been down, we've been down this road before, and if you're not very careful, you can gobble that hundred and forty thousand dollars up and have nothing to show for it. It happened before. I mean, we granted them a hundred thousand dollars. What did we get for it? Nothing. I think if you're going to spend that money, it should be put on something that we can I go along with that, they need to be replaced, but as long as it's for some purpose that, that we can see. You have to be very careful, but I'm telling you, because once you start down, down the wrong road, why, it's going to end up in a disaster. There's, there's a lot of things you can use that for in this city. We got, we got parks that need shelters, we got. We got parks that need shelters, we got, you know, something like that, that the public can see and use. You can advertise, you can have signs all the way from here to the end of the Cook Road, but you're not going to, you're not going to get people here unless there's something for those people to see. And I've told time and time again, if you're going to draw people in, you're going to have to have something that they want to see. We need more activities. We have a wonderful park with a stage. We need, you could have local band competition, you could have, you could have a blues festival down there. But you can, you can spend this money and have absolutely nothing to show for it. So I'm saying, if you're going to, if you're going to use it, use it for something constructive, something that benefits the city and makes things look better.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Councilwoman McLaughlin, Ms. Kestie would like to say something.
I agree with Chuck on this one. What I'm seeing and what this is turning into reminds me a lot of the downtown association where we didn't, we gave them money and really didn't get a whole lot in return. And I feel like this is going that way. And I would much rather see us be able to finish a project such as, you know, something at one of the parks, or finish something rather than where this is going, because I just see this going towards a lot of things that will not better benefit. So for that reason, I'm not for this program.
Councilwoman McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also wanted to echo Chuck. I think that was a big thing that we talked about on the committee, was we need to make sure that these are external-facing, so that it benefits everyone in the community, and that we do see an immediate benefit when you're driving through town and there's new murals that have been restored, or there's new awnings. And it ultimately comes down to, you know, we're trying to work with the businesses that are here, that have, you know, been supporting our city, that bring people in. I mean, there's, I know one business that we've talked to on this committee, you know, people drive from Bellingham and Stanwood to come to Seidra Wully because of the brand. So we do have businesses like that, that we want to support and make it more appealing so when those people are coming in, these small grants can help these businesses make it look better for the city. And when it comes to doing stuff like parks, you know, we built and funded two parks, you know, from the same source. So I think we're doing that already. And we are trying to use a small portion of those funds now to funnel directly into the businesses that we work with every day, and focus on the outside so that the improvements they make are not just for their own benefit, but it's for the benefit of the whole city. And I'd also like to touch on the point that, you know, if somebody puts up a better sign, it can bring, you know, I don't know, 10 more people in a month. And so there is ways that some of these grants are going to increase sales tax if it can attract more people because the new sign looks better, or it gets your eyes' attention. So not all of the projects that are going to come to us are going to have immediate tax, you know, increase for us. But overall, I think we have to look at a holistic picture that we're trying to have a partnership with the businesses, and that's why I'm for this program. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, Mr. Burns, I'm sorry.
So the purpose of this for beautification in the city, letting us partner with businesses so we can help them have a better outward-facing appearance to the community, I believe is going to be very useful to their ability to generate more revenue, and it will also help encourage their neighbors to do the same thing. Because eventually, you know, you look at your neighbors just painted their house and go, wow, maybe I ought to paint my house, too. Businesses say the same thing. And for the members who are concerned about this, remember that you are the final say for this program for each and every grant. If you choose to not approve something, that's your prerogative. You can say, well, I feel that this money would be better spent somewhere else, and decline to approve a program. If everyone agrees, then that is the way that it goes. And that's part of the reason why the council seems so adamant that we bring it back here, so that you can all have that say and make sure that we stay within the expectations we have towards the way our community looks. So, thank you.
Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. So as you know, I was, I obviously voted no when we were voting to bring it back. And I thought, well, we need to look at different avenues. I would just personally like to see something happen. I've been on the council for, you know, almost, going on two years, it'd be going on two years. We did all of 2021, or 2022 committee, and then 2023 so far. We really haven't done anything. We've reapproved some park drawings that were already in motion, or revisited some of the bids that were there to try and save money there, but, you know, the awning, or the archways over the railroad pass, trying to figure out something to take away that eyesore. And that was, I put that forward, I didn't really get any action on it. There's been a number of ideas that have been pushed forward without any action. We actually have 300,000 in strategic planning for the council, and we just used half of that, I believe, to pay bills because we're not utilizing it. We've got the 300,000, the economic fund, we're not using any of it. And so we haven't done anything to improve the city as far as a look. Some of the fencing that's ran down on both sides, coming in from nine or around the roundabout, the roundabouts are just rocks. There's some gray buildings right downtown, there's some rundown areas. The signs, which we all agree upon, are just nine items on a single sign pointing, you just can't even see it. So those signs aren't effective. And this isn't just me, this is a lot of people that I've spoken to in the community who want to see the change, and they're not seeing it. And there's a lot of great ideas, and they don't go anywhere. So I would love to see us, see something go forward that is going to enhance this community somehow. And if this is a way to take a chance with that, then it might be worth taking that chance. If there's a way to take that other money and look into other programs, such as fixing fencing, or putting that archway up, or fixing the statues downtown, something to make this town a little bit more beautiful on our end with the money we have, we should look at that and do that. So I'd be, I'd be helped, any which way we can go, I'm down to go.
Councilwoman?
So when I look at that, I hear all of this for the businesses, and I am all for supporting businesses and what's going to help them. But what I see on there is saying something else. And so the street carnival, the live music, the movies in the park, and other family-friendly events, when that's going to be pulling from it, and it isn't just strategic for the businesses, that's where my, my problem lies.
Councilwoman Allen?
Madam Mayor, I've got to add my two bits worth. I owned a building and had a business in town, the family had it for like 65 years. We can beautify Seidra Wully all we want, but if there are no businesses down there, to what avail? I mean, there's very few businesses that are still open, you know, a few restaurants, pawn shops. And pretty much, other than that, I think we're just peeing away $140,000 trying to feel good about ourselves, or $140,000. That's my own opinion, you know, it's like a little kid finds $100 in a piggy bank and he goes out and buys a bunch of candy when he could be buying himself a bicycle. You know, I mean, it's, that's how I feel. I'm just, I'm not real excited about just throwing money. Business owners, building owners, they should be beautifying on their own as much as possible. So I think we're just enabling people that are unwilling to fix up their own front yards. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Actually, if I might pose a question to the council. So, Councilwoman Kestie, you brought up the street carnivals. So this is not a wholly unmovable document. If we strike certain lines from this, does that make it so that you all feel more agreeable
Any comments?
Oh, I just had a question. In here we have new statues or statue refurbishment, do those, the statues outside those buildings, they belong to the city, or do they belong to establishments in which they're sitting outside of?
The establishments.
They do, they belong to the establishments?
Yeah. They're privately owned, you're talking about the carvings?
Yeah, the big carvings that they're talking about. I'm assuming that that's what's being discussed in here.
Yeah. They're privately owned.
Okay.
Okay. And any response to Councilman Burns' question?
As far as like items on that list, if there's things that could be struck through, is there, just posing another question, is there an item that would be something that we can do to enhance the city? Has anybody driving through the city, going through any of our parks, looking through the downtown, is there any area that stands out that we can just say, hey, let's, let's take it upon ourselves to authorize the refinishing of that, or the improvement of that? Is there anything in town that would strike the council as something that we can improve?
I would personally say that the signs coming into town with the nine, you know, I think that they're too small, people can't quite see them correctly. I think you're right in that, having been brought up numerous times in the past. I think that that's something that could be done and addressed. Some of the banners are old and could use some updating, and that would help to beautify that. They'd go great with flowers. I don't know if the, some of this money could be held over and used for funding the flowers and that sorts of stuff down the downtown district the following year, so then it alleviates money elsewhere, you know? So that's something that could maybe be shuffled around, but alleviate, leaving those funds in the general fund to then go use, be used somewhere else towards our first responders or something of that sort, if we can move something around in that realm, so that we're using this money purposefully to beautify, but also freeing up funds elsewhere where they could be, you know, used more efficiently. Lighting, I think lighting needs to be cohesive down, down, if we're talking specifically the downtown district, you know, so, you know, all the same lights, you know, some of the domes are getting old and maybe have been repaired, maybe they just all need to be refurbished, or they need to be new ones, so they're all cohesive. But that, again, would become a city project rather than a grant project, something that would work, you know, repainting and taking care of that sorts of stuff. So I think there are a lot of things that could be done in that realm.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to interrupt you just a minute because you're going, you've got some good suggestions, but you're going in a different direction. Right now in front of us is actually the community grant program, so.
Correct, I was simply responding to his question.
And that goes right along with the discussion. If you don't mind, we're talking about the grant program and how that would work out, or if we should go forward with it.
What I hear happening, what I hear happening here is the, taking the funding and then the council choosing to do different things with it versus what's in front of us right now, which is actually a community grant. I do want to point out that what you're talking about as far as the items that are listed, it's clearly said example of projects to be included, but it's not limited to them. So I guess it just depends upon what the, what the community or community member might bring before the council. But for now, what you need to decide is, do you want to move forward with this grant program, or do you not?
I think, Madam Mayor, if we may, we're having that discussion about like whether this program we should go with, or if there's, if there's projects we should focus on, and which, which realm that should be, if it's just a yes or no without anything on the.
I'm going to cut you off right there, no, I'm going to cut you off right there, because this is about the community grant program. That is the discussion. Do you want to move forward with this or not?
How do you know the options that you have if you're not putting those on the table, if I may?
Because you're going in a different direction. You're going in a different direction, and it's not on the agenda. What's on the agenda is the community grant. If you choose not to move forward with the community grant, then that could be something that you could bring forward with, Councilman Lavaca, maybe taking that money and doing other things, having that discussion, maybe taking it to your council committees. But right now, we are dealing with the county, the community development grant, and so let's stay focused here so we can move forward with that.
No, I appreciate that view on that. And that's, I think, what we're doing, is if there's things on the line items that we would cross out, which would those be, and what items would we actually see go forward? And would those be business owners? So do the businesses own the statues? They do. Would they be the ones applying for the grants to improve those? Do the businesses own the lamps, or do we, or is that something that they would be able to do? So trying to just understand, what can we agree upon, I guess, is what we're trying to do in a civil discussion. And then what would we not agree upon, we can just leave it aside. But yeah, the grant program is what's in front of us.
If you, if you so choose, you can actually have this taken back to the business community, or business council, and have them discuss this, again, with the information that you're actually putting forth. It sounds like you want a more clearly defined list, perhaps?
No, Madam Mayor, I was at the business committee, I'm on that, on that committee. So what we brought forth, we all actually voted on. And we said that, yeah, we like this. So in the discussion with the council, who's saying, well, maybe this isn't working, that's where clarity or understanding kind of comes in. So I voted for this packet, and I, this is what we brought forth, and that's what I opened up with. So, thank you.
So, Madam Mayor, I would love to pose my question again. If there are sections of this that being struck would make it more agreeable to council members who are not currently interested in it, because we're all going to end up voting on what comes back from this. So if we're including examples that the council's not going to approve, it's probably pointless to have them there anyway. So I would agree that some of these things, we probably should have removed once we took individuals out, like neighborhood or business cleanup, we can remove neighborhood or historical markers. Well, I guess that depends if it's on a building. Advertising for city tourism, that's something that's been brought up that might not be agreeable. That's what I'm asking, is are there things that would make this workable for the rest of the council? Because as Councilman Lavaca stated, the three of us voted on this to bring it to the council, but it is still a changeable document. We can add or remove from it so that it becomes something that will work, so that we can actually help the business owners in Seidra Wully.
Councilman McLaughlin?
I just wanted to add one more thing. Like Councilman Burns said, the examples up there are changeable, but ultimately, at the end of the day, every single one of them that comes up, we get to have a yea or nay on. So if there's stuff like a carnival that comes up and we don't want to do that, that's our prerogative, we can say no. But let's just say that there's one business out there that is doing well, they've been here 20 years, and they just need a little bit of capital to make their signs better, or redo some of their windows. Are we really going to stomp on them and say, no, we're not going to support you guys? Like, this is a very small sliver of the total funds we've been given. And this is our opportunity for the businesses that survived COVID, that were with us this whole time, for us to give back and say, hey, let's work together and make you guys look more beautiful, which will in turn make the city more beautiful, and continue bringing more people in. So for me, like, even if we don't approve any but one business that has a really good idea, that's worth it for me. You know, we don't have to approve 140,000. If there's one business out of all the applications that we see and we don't like, if there's one out there that we all like, we're not going to see it if we vote no right now. So that's why I'm just saying, let's get the program out there, let's see what the community really wants. And then we can say yes or no on each one. So that's all I have to say.
I'm not opposed to what Councilmember McLaughlin is saying. My questions were simply to, well, they were simply my questions in understanding how this works, and I appreciate your discussion, Councilman Lavaca, because that is the kind of discussion that we need to have in order to make proper decisions. Because like Councilman McLaughlin said, if we only have one person that is approved, we still have $130,000 to do, and those are projects that we can probably do with city through, through public works, or however that that all pans out. But that's all stuff that we don't know unless we have those discussions sitting here. And so I do appreciate all conversation that has been had today. And so if you want to talk about specific things that I would personally think that should be removed in the fact that this is specifically talking about beautifying the city, as how it's written, I would say removing street carnivals, live music, movies in the park, and other family-friendly events for this specific purpose, because we're talking about this happening in the downtown district, more specifically as in beautifying and under code, those sorts of projects aren't going to probably be happening in the middle of Metcalf Street. Metcalf Street. I could be wrong, somebody may have a different view on that, but that, that's where that follows me. Also, removing neighborhood or, because we're not doing individuals and it's not for a neighborhood, it's for a business. Broken sidewalks and street trees, I think that's, that's definitely discussions with public works, so that's, you know, that would be something that would probably be a case-by-case basis, but I think that that falls more into public works rather than beautifying the city. Those are projects that are going to take more than this grant.
So, what would the council like to do? Would they like to move forward with the grant with those items mentioned by Councilwoman Diamond to be removed, carnivals, the neighborhoods, broken sidewalks and trees? Or, do you want it to come back or you want it to go back to the committee? What is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I'd be perfectly happy with striking those and moving to approve it.
Okay. There any comments on that?
No.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to move forward with the grant program based upon the items that were striked and the discussions we've had tonight.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilwoman Lavaca, second by Councilman McGoffin to approve the community, community development grant program, resolution 111723, striking items carnival, neighborhoods, broken sidewalks and trees. Any more discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. So, I'll go through one, so, we'll go through them one by one. So, Councilman Owen, are you for?
I'm against.
You're against, okay. McGoffin?
For.
Okay. Let me have this down here. Diamond?
For, with the removal of the items noted.
Okay, thank you. Burns?
For.
All right. Kestie?
Against.
Okay. Allen?
Against.
All right, thank you. And Lavaca?
For.
All right. So, we have, it, it has passed four to three, four yays and three noes. And the noes were Owen, Kestie and Allen. All right. So, we have a grant. I want to reiterate exactly what Councilman McGoffin said. These items will come before you, these grants will come before you and you do have the final say, so you still have a say-so over this. All right, thank you. Moving on then to new business, item two, the comprehensive plan amendments. And I believe that is you, Nicole.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. All right, so, we're taking this back for a second read. This is the Peterson rezone that was originally introduced back on February 1st, 2023, at the Joint City Council and Planning Commission Study Session. So, the council made a motion to add the rezone request to the 2023 Comprehensive Plan docket. There are two items on the docket, two rezone requests from private landowners. However, the Benson rezone, that was also approved to be added to the docket on February 1st, has stalled. We found a problem statement in the intent section of the R-15 zoning code that prevents us from moving forward with that one at this time. So, the stay will be in place until that issue is resolved. For tonight's meeting, I'm requesting action from city council on only the Peterson rezone. So, as a recap, the Peterson rezone is a request to change the zoning designation of a roughly 2.53 acre parcel of land at 1122 State Street from current residential five zoning designation to residential seven. The properties to the west are zoned R7, properties to the north and south are zoned R5, and the property to the east is outside of city limits within the UGA. The uses surrounding the property include single-family homes to the west, a 14-unit apartment complex to the north, single-family homes to the south, and single-family homes in pasture land to the east. Under the current R5 zoning designation, residential development is limited to single-family residences on lots of 8,400 square feet or greater at a maximum density of five units per acre. And if rezoned R7, it would allow the area to be developed for residential housing at a higher maximum density of seven units per acre. It would allow for the construction of duplexes on lots of 9,000 square feet. There are some additional requirements for that in Chapter 1712, the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code. That would also be allowed in addition to single-family residences on lots of 6,000 square feet or greater. The property would then be able to accommodate the development of an estimated 10 to 15 housing units as opposed to the roughly eight to 10 housing units that can be accommodated under the current R5 zoning. And city services can easily accommodate those additional units. At the May 16th meeting with Planning Commission, they did make a motion to recommend that the city council approve the Peterson rezone. So, I'm asking that city council make a motion tonight on this request. So, if council intends to approve the Peterson rezone as recommended by Planning Commission, then council should make a motion to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation and approve ordinances 205223 and 205323. If the council intends to deny the Peterson rezone, then the council should make a motion to reject the Planning Commission's recommendation and deny the Peterson rezone request. Council should be prepared to provide amended findings of fact to adopt the support, to adopt that support the denial of the rezone. So, let me know if you have any questions.
Are there any questions for Nicole?
No.
Again, this is a second read.
So, I, I do, Madam Mayor. So, on this one, Nicole, they're looking for that R7 and there's already the 14-unit apartment up in that area, whereas that, and that's, and then they have the pasture land and then they have the residential housing. When we did our strategic planning session a while back, or at least looking at how we were going to do the housing, I think we had a small meeting with John and whatnot. I think that's something the whole council was in a, kind of looking at, is like, as far as density and growth, what would we see? Would we see a lot of apartments or some spread out with some mixture? Were you, were you for that or around in that at the time?
I was not.
Okay, yeah. So, I think from what I saw, this is kind of like right along those lines as far as like not densifying too much, but allowing some densification that is obviously needed. You know, we, when I drive down Trail Road or whatnot, there's a lot of densification. I think that was already in play before council ever came together, but this does appear to be within that range of what we, our original discussion. So, it sounds like the Planning Commission actually, you know, kind of took that in and I do appreciate that.
When we were at Planning Commission, we did discuss the new legislation coming in, just recognizing that there is a housing crisis and we do need to be able to provide those higher density. So, I think this is working toward that direction.
Yeah, without over densifying.
Without overdoing.
Yeah, that was something we all looked at, is apartments aren't bad necessarily, but being able to spread them out, so that way they're part of a community and people don't get lost in translation. So, thank you.
All right. Do you have a comment, Mr. Owen?
No.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I make a request that we approve ordinance 2052-23 Peterson rezone request.
Okay. So, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So, I have a motion by Councilman Owen, second by Councilman Allen, to adopt the proposed amendments to the Comprehensive Plan, ordinance 205223. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right. So, then looking for a motion for ordinance 205323, which is the proposed amendments to the zoning map.
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Got it.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilman Burns, second by Councilman Owen, to adopt the proposed amendments to the zoning map, ordinance 205323. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Nicole. Thank you, everyone. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council.
Moving on to new business, and you're going to take us right there, aren't you, Mark? The authorization to award the 2023 pavement and pedestrian improvement project.
Yes, it is. So, this project is the latest in our annual arterial paving projects. We have a TIB grant to support Schedule A of this project. Schedule B is local-funded for the Jameson part. The TIB part is Cook Road from the West City Limits to the Ferry Street Roundabout. I've got the details on the numbers in here and we are recommending award. The bids closed on July the 19th, 2023, with four bids received. The low bid was 2% under the engineer's estimate for the project, David likes to be second, and so this was a good result for him. And the other bids were slightly higher than that, but was a good result on that. And the funds are available for this, as I've detailed in the memorandum, and we are requesting that council move forward with the award of the 2023 Pavement and Pedestrian Improvements Project Contract 2023 PW01 to SRV Construction Incorporated of Anacortis in the amount of $619,504.80, including sales tax. The motion also includes approval of use of transportation benefit funds for the local match for Schedule A, as noted, which is $69,429, and also for all funding for Schedule B at $191,886. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Any questions for Mark?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Mark, just wanted to make sure, SRV Construction, you have full confidence that they're going to do a good job with this?
Yes, they've built several projects for us in the city, they're a good contractor and, and do good work for us.
Well, I appreciate the difference in the bid costs, so I'm for it.
Okay. Anyone else? Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to authorize to award the 2023 Pavement and Pedestrian Improvements Project.
Very.
All right, thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilwoman Diamond, second by Councilman Owen, and this would award the 2023 Pavement and Pedestrian Project Contract 2023 PW01 to SRV Construction, Inc. of Anacortis, Washington, in the amount of $619,504.80, including tax. This also approves the use of the transportation benefit funds for the local match in scheduling A, as noted, and the funding of Schedule B, as noted. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Excellent. Carrie, thank you, Mark. All right. Just one last thing that I want to mention, today was Paula's dedication. We dedicated the small park that we have right there alongside, on the north side of the Chamber Building, and it is now named Paula's Promenade, her family was there. The beautification that has taken there, to Councilman McGoffin's point, is that the painting that was done there, the flowers that were planted, that really drew in a lot of people. And after the dedication, there was much discussion about where other things like that could happen within the city and people got very excited about it. So, point well taken, Councilman McGoffin. All right, so, Paula will be missed, she was on the council. As I said in my speech, she was a firecracker, she really was, but she brought some good things to the council and worked great as a team, she was a great team player. Paula will be missed. All right, if there is nothing else, we are adjourned. Thank you.